All right, we'll call the regular meeting, Mayor Board of Alderman, December tenth, twenty twenty four to order. You'll call.
Alderman Meadows.
Present.
Alderman Myers.
Here.
Alderman Roland.
Here.
Alderman Ward.
Here.
Alderman Ward will do the pledge. Alderman Myers.
Attention, salute pledged. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for another wonderful day here in Decatur. We ask that everything that is done and said here tonight be pleasing unto you. Please help us to do the business that you have us do for the city. We ask during this time that we take a second to remember what the meaning of the season really is. We ask you to watch over our military wherever they may be, our first responders, our police, and our public works and admin staff. Please bless our country, bless our state, and bless our town, for it's in your name we pray. Amen.
All right, so everybody here that is not on the agenda that wishes to address the board. Move on, go on to the consent agenda items. We'll start with the minutes. Anybody have any questions? November twelfth, twenty twenty four meeting. Now move on to the financial report.
Couple of questions please. Line, TM three seven one nine 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 miscellaneous receipts.
That is the, that's the VSW purchase of the building. It needs to be moved. It doesn't need to stay there, but in order to get it into Alderman's, we put it there. We'll need to move it in just something else. But yeah, it's a nice one. It's too bad that, yeah, there wasn't some surprise.
Okay, next line down, TDA impact.
Yeah, we got those in.
And that's it?
Yeah, that's in for the year. We put a hundred thousand in. I don't think we just, I don't think it really came in low. We just weren't, you know, you just never know how much is gonna come in, but it's a pretty, pretty good number. So eighty-four thousand, yep. And we will have, I think, next month I will go through and, you know, prepare some budget amendments on a few different items. I know on one to point out, just because it would probably stick out if you, if you look at it, we have on water expenses, I was just talking to Rusty about it earlier. We've got under thirty twenty, operating expenses. We have forty thousand. So we just, we have had a twenty-four thousand dollar invoice for meters come in, and that pushed us, you know, way, way over there.
That was a question.
I was waiting for that one. You know, if you look down at the next item, you know, repaired maintenance, we have a hundred and fifty-five thousand, and we spent twelve, so we can always move some. And those are just hard guesses on what, what the year's gonna be like, but, but we are, we are over there. But I'll, we'll prepare something for next month to take care of some of those overages.
And I had asked you last month about the special events, we like the fair ground, the fair.
Yes, the fair.
Where does the revenue go?
The, it goes in the fire department donations, and we're gonna pull that. I know we had some discussion last month, and I need to figure out the way to pull those completely separate, but it's ten, let's see here, there's a fire department, yeah, fire department donations in the bottom, the special revenue down there. So that's what, so we brought in fifteen fifty, and that's D E C.
In their account though, that's their, is that their checking account?
Yes.
Right, I mean, we don't, we have it all in our, I mean.
Have we had the revenue come in for the fair round?
Yes, that, that fifteen fifty is what has come in this fiscal year.
What did they start with?
That should be just our donation, because remember we use the fair money.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Turn around and pay it back.
Right, that's what money has come in to cover those special events.
But I'm just saying, I know the checking account was a lot more.
Right, it has a, and, you know, let me, we, we've gotta come up with a way, because all that money came in last fiscal year. You're just looking at a fiscal, this is, this fiscal year report, and so this is not a good report.
Yeah, I'm just looking at what's paid out.
Yeah, and so that's what, that's what come in this fiscal year. We've shown what's paid out this fiscal year. But I'll, I'll pull it aside into another little section to show balance and revenue and expenses, so that that is clear.
Yeah.
My intention was, I'll, and I'll, I'll put it up here on this cash balances section on the agenda.
I still feel like their, their account should be separate, like the police inheritance. It should be their own, or the drug fund, it should be their own line that carries over every year and is separate from the other.
That would be good. I think I wasn't at the meet, I think we had that on the agenda a couple of months ago, and that was the one that I wasn't here for, and so, and I, I don't think any action was taken at that point. And we were thinking maybe we could just pull that out in some different line items. But I think it would be great to pull it aside, and we'll, we'll reconcile it, and we'll.
So do we make the action, or do we just do it as budget amendment? How do we, how do we? To me, that's too hard, that's gonna be too hard to follow for them.
So, so what I think that's wrong is you got in twelve fifteen for your guys for working, right? One thousand two.
He was right at a thousand for the fair. And then.
I mean, I'm showing fifteen fifty as the revenue for the.
Yeah, but then he shows twelve fifteen.
Because we.
What we, what we spent out. That's the expense I got.
But where's their checking account?
Again, it is in the, we, we, I've, I've got a separate spreadsheet. Basically, we're keeping up with it on the spreadsheet, because we, because we took all that money and put it into the general fund.
Right.
But if we want to take that balance.
It's gotta be here somewhere. We can't just, this part of our budget.
I know, I, I just, right now, right now, it's kept up as a separate, but if we want to.
Motion to create a checking account.
Open a new checking account for it.
A restricted account. I make a motion to create a restricted account, so the funds carry over year after year.
But we don't need another checking account. We just.
We need a line, however.
In the budget. To, to show.
To show.
The current balance, not the annual.
It's not gonna go away unless you spend it. And it's not.
Now, my, their money doesn't get lost in the shuffle some way.
Sure, because it's lost right now.
I don't know what's there.
Yeah, it's not like, it's, but it, it does not show up on these reports that you see monthly.
Is it easier to do it in the checking account separate, like what is it?
The drug fund's not a separate account, is it?
Yeah, the drug fund is separate, and, and so, of course, you know, when you talk about the police inheritance fund.
I'm just, I'm talking about.
Like, but you, you know, you mentioned that. You don't really see on these expense reports, you don't see what the balance is on that. You only see that because I'm painting on the front.
So maybe if you just add it there.
Why don't we need to have?
That's just somewhere, again.
And again, I, I, let me do that. Before, before next month, I will have a system where I can explain to you how you can see the balance and what's been spent and what is coming in.
Yeah, I think it's important for them to know kinda what they got. And I just wanna put out one thing I had Laura clarify for me. Technically, on the fourth page of the account running back, the dog park construction, it looks like we're a hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-three cents over, but we are not. We still have that money. We just allotted five thousand in the line item. But we still have money in that grant, and there's actually still a little bit more money that we've got to spend. So just to clarify, we are not over budget there. It's just.
So that'll be another one of those budget amendments that we'll prepare, so that we can spend our whole budget.
We do have money.
We're ready to spend the whole budget. We've got a few more thousand dollars there.
And again, that was a reimbursable, so once we spend the full twenty-five thousand, we will get that back. So we're, we're out the money, but we're not out the money.
Temporarily.
Temporarily, but that was one that I called and said, ah, help me go over, you know. And so she clarified that for me, and I appreciate her doing that. Just because in my simple mind, we're over budget, and, but we're not, so.
But we're, we're, I say we're not, we're, there's some lines that we're, are over budget, and it makes me nervous, because I know how tight our budget is. For example, you go to electricity, rental buildings, municipal buildings. You know, we've had mild months, we've had some mild weather, you know. I don't know how we, I don't know how we control that.
I don't know that we can.
Rental building electricity will go down.
Is that the VSW?
VSW, yeah, that's the VSW.
And next, the bank, or is the bank.
Um, I don't believe, uh, we, we share, we bill the bank for their portion, and then it gets paid out of municipal buildings. And so we, we recover, we recover that, but we don't, we don't put it separately in the line item. But yeah, that, so, so we will save a little on electricity. Well, all of the rental building.
Electricity, water, answer.
I would be curious to see kinda how we end with the audit results for this year and next year, to see if maybe we can back down off water bills a little bit. I'm, I'm, that's the main thing I hear when I'm out and about, is how much everyone's water bill is. My water bill is more than my power bill, and I'm a single person living in a house. So I, I understand the concern from the community. Their water bills are so high right now. I do think we need to revisit that, to see if we can at some point in time, maybe back off that percentage a little bit, just to help people, 'cause it's tough right now.
I've heard a lot of the water lately, but we've not changed anything, so I don't know why everybody.
No, I don't know either. I was shocked when I got my bill, 'cause I thought, do I have a leak? But I really don't think I do. It's just, I think it's just what it is. But when my electric bill is lower than my water bill, to me, that's a concern as a homeowner, not only as an Alderman, but I do think that's something we need to revisit and see if we can back off that a little bit.
We have water and sewer.
I have water and sewer. And then another question that I have been asking, and I promised I would ask tonight, and I've already talked to Laura about it, and Mayor, you may know the direct answer. I was approaching the P W W at seven oh five one morning, and I was not quite ready for that. People that live, there's one lady in particular that lives across the street from La Hoxie Enda. She has a septic tank, but because sewer goes through there, she still pays sewer, and her sewer is more than her water. Her sewer bill's going up every month, based on how much water she uses. Then I was approached by somebody that lives in Decatur Hills with the exact same question. They said, why is there not a flat rate for sewer if you don't use it? Why am I paying sixty dollars a month for sewer that I'm not even using? And I said, that's a great question. I'll get back with you. So, and then I, I called a friend of mine today who lives in Decatur Hills, and she sent me her past three water bills, and her sewer bill, forty, fifty, and sixty dollars, but she's using the septic tank. So I understand they're paying for a service, I get that, but they're not using the service.
It's alwa, that's the way it's always been, if it's.
That doesn't mean it's always right, though.
Right, right, I'm just saying, that's the way it's always been.
That's the way it is everywhere else. It goes through there.
And I, I get that. I'm just wondering, do our customers know that? Is that in writing somewhere? Have they signed something? Because the people that have approached me did not know, and they were upset, and I get it. And I didn't have a good answer, and I don't think that's the way it's always been. It's gonna be the answer that suffices with me.
Why, I got a question.
Do you know the answer?
Well.
'Cause I thought there was some sort of law.
There's no sewer in Decatur Hills.
They said they're paying for sewer up there.
Where does she live in Decatur Hills? Because there is no sewer in Decatur Hills.
The very first house, Mamaw Molly's old house.
Is it, is it on Borders?
Borders on River Road.
There is there on River Road, but there's not in Decatur Hills. So her address is River Road.
She, her address is Decatur Hills.
But it's accessible.
Crestway or something, Crestview, Crest something.
Availability fee.
And I, I get an availability fee, but I'm also getting, if they're not using it, why can we not have a base fee pay? A minimum charge. A minimum charge of thirty dollars a month, or whatever. But this fluctuating, going up, 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 in the economy that we're in is really hard on people. Now, the lady that, that was close to La Hoxie Enda, she wasn't as nice as the lady in Decatur Hills.
Well, I know that 'cause Randall and I went to that.
Okay, so you know who I'm talking about?
Who you're talking about.
And, and she was upset, and I don't fault her for being upset. I, I, it's just questions I have. I don't know the answer.
I have a lot unanswered for some on septic tanks. I have contacted Tannenfield Field Office, and that caused one case of big yellow rod that lives there, left you.
Yeah.
Okay, her septic tank is failing.
Okay.
All right, and she has access to sewer, but we're under self-mortuary. So I asked the Tannenfield Field Office, Angela Oberschmidt, about that. She said if their septic tank is failing, that overrides self-mortuary, because they can't hook to sewer if their septic tank is failing. So if, like, okay, I know who you're talking about down here.
Yeah.
Did you mention names? I'm not gonna mention names.
Well, I don't know them straight, too.
Well, if their septic tank's failing, they can hook the sewer, and the self-mortuary, that's the goal. Because that's, that's EPA, that's environmental problem. So that can happen. All we gotta do is write a letter.
That states that.
That states, yeah.
That's good to know. That's good knowledge. I don't, I don't know. It's just questions that I have, and I would like clarification on that. I can have a better answer for people.
I understand. It's not, it doesn't seem fair. But like Laura mentioned it, to justify, to cover costs of expanding sewer lines, you've gotta have, okay, everybody's here, you're gonna hook on the sewer, or you're gonna be charged as you hook on the sewer, whether you hook on or not, so.
But I think there's something with the state, isn't there, that if it goes by your house, you have to go, or you have to pay for it?
They made a new rule on that. If, if you build a new home, new home, okay? And you have access to sewer, you have to hook on sewer. That's a state law. That you can't put in septic tank. If it, if the sewer touches your property.
Hey, what about these existing houses? 'Cause I don't think.
Well, the ones that still on septic, that's, you know, but they're saying if you got that, you, you ain't hook on it.
Whether you have septic or not.
Yeah.
So if, if our friend down here just decided she wanted to hook on, but her septic is not failing.
If it's not failing, well, she's actually out of town, so she will be able to.
She should be able to.
Okay, she should. And we take care of it if you're already paying for it. I don't, I just didn't have a good answer, and it was seven oh five in the morning, and I don't have a good answer for anything at seven oh five in the morning. I pulled out in front of Mr. Davis this morning and sat there for five minutes. I'm sorry about that. I, my brain doesn't work that early in the morning. I didn't have enough Diet Coke. I just, I would rather have a good answer than, a better answer than.
That's the way.
I don't know. That's the way it is, you know. I, I would rather have a more. It's our state law that says, or if our city's.
I know ordinance says.
It's in our ordinance, too. I'm just getting it up to see those words.
Any kind of new, I don't know.
But that's a separate thing.
If it touches the property, they have to hook to it on you.
Okay. So you can look that up and maybe just send it out or something, and then I'll go back to those people and explain it. I don't care to do that. I just need an answer that I don't have. It does seem, as John said, unfair. When you're looking at a mama with three kids or two kids, and they're paying for something, they're getting nothing from.
But that's to push them towards the, the more EPA-friendly septic system, or sewer system as opposed to septic tank.
I just said I would ask, and I did, so I need an answer.
Do you have some financial? All right. Chief Rowan, you have anything?
Yes, I do. If, if you guys have been paying attention, I guess you know about the dog situation that we had up at the wash barn. Anybody not know, really? I made headlines on TikTok news, so.
Seriously?
Oh, yeah, we both know. So luckily, we had a good citizen who took the dog in. The dog, the lady left the dog at the wash barn. The dog was having puppies and was in distress. We responded and got, got the lady on camera, and she'd been arrested. So my point being, we dodged a bullet because the good citizen took the dog and the puppies in and took care of the problem for us. The problem that we have is, we don't have any options for animal control. The lady that we had that was doing it, is low longer doing it. We didn't put it in our budget this year to even have somebody. So it'd be my suggestion to the board that we do something about that, if not this year, next year's budget, to give us some options, because if that person happened to be in to take care of that puppy, then I guess our mayor and myself would've been getting a lot of phone calls from Channel Nine. So myself, I'd rather dodge that bullet instead of having to deal with it. You guys would like to have some discussion about that.
Do they have?
I have no clue who to use, have anybody that even takes care of them in shelters. Laura might know. She knows that stuff.
That group that I looked up the other day when you had asked, there, there is a group. They have a Facebook page, and they talk about animal rescue in, in.
The problem we've had in the past is they don't, there's, some of them don't service Mex County.
And this group is in.
They only service the county that they.
Well, this group is in Mex County, and we can.
What we were doing in the past, we were giving that lady, what, twenty-five hundred dollars a year to.
Three thousand in the last couple of years.
Three thousand dollars to house the animals and take care of them. That three thousand dollar paper, dog food, vet bills, whatever she needed bills for. We just give her the money, let her make her own decisions, and that's what took care of her. So if not this year, you definitely need to look at it next year's budget, because we need some options.
Have we ever discussed with either Ray County or McMinn County on their animal shelters if we?
Have McMinn County, and they told us, well, it's been several years ago, they told us no. That's when they first told us, so I don't know if they've changed.
I think they changed, I think, I heard the other day that they said that was the rules before, but now they're helping surrounding counties.
Well, it might be an option.
Maybe we can work out something. I'll reach out to agency.
Animal Rescue and Facility of Mex County, it says there are five oh one C three nonprofit located in Mex County. Our mission is to provide a loving safe place for neglected, abused, stray animals. And there's a phone number and a name, so maybe that's somebody to, we could contact to see along with the others.
That'd be great, so. To, to those people, I know in the past, they came in front of the county board, came in front of us asking for money. We give money, and county didn't give any money. Are they, do they need donations? I mean, does it say on the website? Are you looking at the website?
They definitely are always talking about needs for money.
So anyway, you guys would like to have some discussion about what we're willing to listen, whatever you want to do.
And just to clarify, so that, the money that we gave, correct me if I'm wrong, Monty, it wasn't necessarily that they take every dog that they see in the city. It was that, that, the contract with, with Tracy that we had was that they would respond when any, a police had an issue. She would respond and, and handle then, and so that was specifically what we gave that money for. It wasn't necessarily, you take every dog from any call, you get a Decatur.
We only deal with problem dogs.
Yeah.
If we don't get a call, we don't respond. Some years we'd go and maybe have two or three dogs, some years, just please don't advertise in the paper. We done that one time, and we'd get straight dogs like Tracy.
But we actually had a contract with Tracy, and she.
We've had a contract with Tracy ever since I've been here.
Would respond if, if the police had an issue and needed, needed her help.
Maybe we can reach out to that.
Group.
That group in Athens, and get some information about what our options are.
We'll see what our options are, bring it back to the next workshop, and see if we can get something together.
Thank you.
Chief Franklin.
Yeah, we meant to get this in the, we got a grant from State Forestry last month. Uh, we got two leaf blowers, five sets of wildland gear, and a hard hat, and two drip torches. So that's pretty good. Drip torches to do backfires.
Thought you said drift, like dripping down the road, or down the river.
No, they're just a torch. You put a mixture of kerosene and backfire to put the fire out. So that was a pretty good gift, and we also do have another one in for Airfax. It was turned in two weeks ago, so.
How long, what do you do on that?
Well, we've been turning down twice on it, so hopefully this'll be the one, I hope. That's almost two hundred thousand we're asking for.
The grant that you did get, did you send them a thank you card, or do we need to?
They won't take a thank you card. We paid for it anyway, in the long run.
Tax, tax money, pay them.
And what grant was that? Is that one that's?
Forestry, State Forestry.
Okay, have they, do we have a contract on that yet? I don't see anything. Okay, make sure I don't feel like I'm missing something.
We were with about four years ago, too. So usually about four years ago.
So they'll be sending us a contract, and I'll get some of that, okay.
But if we send a thank you card, we might get it every three years.
Well, no, I don't.
Just three.
In the world where you don't have to pay for sewer, if you don't hook to it.
You don't have to say, I was John Myers.
Quick question, Ty. You know, the, the Farm Memorial Drive, it's, was it here like four times?
It should've been twice. Well, no, we did go back three times. No, we went back four times.
Hit, hit three kindlers.
I went back that morning.
Gotcha, okay.
And then they went back again, which, we got everything inside, so we knew it was a. We even told dispatch, sorry, that we didn't need to go back, but they still, if they get the call, they have to.
They have to do it. Did John go to the first fire?
No.
Did he even go?
And it's a good thing.
Yeah, that, that was my fear.
Because we had, we actually had to reach out to McMinn County Athens for help, because the county was tied up.
I did add in, Tony emailed me, I think today, this non-paid hours report. That was in addition to what I sent out last week, and I just added it to the packet tonight.
It's in the packet?
Yeah, it's in the, in the packet. It was printed, and it's on your, it's on your tablet. It's after the, after the fire call, department activity log.
I always appreciate to see that, because somebody did ask me at a football game, if the fire department got paid to be there, and I was like, no, if it's a volunteer hours, you're welcome.
And would you rate sending that out with the remains?
So I appreciate you sending that, I really do, and I really, really appreciate the Christmas tree. It's beautiful. I drive by it just about every night. Y'all be cute.
Well, speaking of the Christmas tree, we spent our first hour trying to get in that door. Can we get that taken off? Is that a door locked? No reason for it to be locked. Only thing in there is a tree, and so you shut the door, it's locked. Not a lock.
If you can find a key to it, unlock it.
It's unlocked, and we got it unlocked, because we went over the top.
Yeah, they had to go over.
Yeah, they had to go over.
We, there ain't nobody.
I know. We got, we got.
So can we get that locked, taking it off?
Oh, you're getting three keys to the master or?
Just, just do a door lock. Yeah, there's.
Well, I think these doors are special doors, because we're gonna put on a list, and you have to have a certain type of door and off.
Take it off like this and leave it alone, because.
That's why that one don't have one.
Get in there, that, go to spill the tree.
Well, there's also, there's also a, is that the sewer over in the corner? Or is that, it's got some pump or something over in the corner?
Yeah, in here.
In that building, in that room, back there, you couldn't get in.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get it.
And nobody figured to get that tree, so just leave it unlocked.
Who climbed across the?
Who will fit? Who will fit?
I think that, I think Sean will do that.
Sean or Ty.
All right, we'll move on to public works report. Rusty, have you anything?
Well, yeah, one thing adds this, uh, as of today, the clarifier has been fixed. And we'll put it back online tomorrow. Works, yes.
Good.
Yes.
We get a final bill, we know what... Final bill, money?
I haven't seen that yet.
Just wondering if we were able to get it over?
I think they said it wouldn't be over.
It wouldn't be over.
Wouldn't be over that, so hopefully it'll be under.
It'll be under, it should be under.
All right, there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve all of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Alderman Meadows? Uh, yeah. Alderman Myers?
Ah.
Alderman Peaton?
Ah.
Alderman Rowland?
Ah.
Alderman Ward?
Ah.
All right, uh, with our communications, uh, attorney report?
Mayor, I have a couple of items this month. The first one probably does not even need to be reported because I'm sure by now everybody knows what resulted. But at last month's meeting, uh, I reported that the following Friday, which was three days after the meeting, that you and I would be, uh, meeting with the fellows from the VFW to close the sale. Of course, we did close it. To my knowledge, all the documents were filed after we met and had them signed. So just as a matter of caution, uh, I need to have the minutes reflect that that sale did go through. And to my knowledge, everything is prophetic, as they say. Uh, the second issue that I have tonight has to do with a piece of property which has been the subject of possible subdivision. I met with, um, an attorney who represents the owner. And he proffered to me a plot, a proposed plot of the property, which was preliminarily submitted on March twenty-sixth, according to this plat. I will hand these out, I have run copies for each member of the board, as well as for the recorder and the mayor. See, I have a key there. I understand that, um, some time ago, Mayor, that son of, Mr. Thompson is the name, met with you and proffered a plot which was unacceptable. But it appears as if he's cleaned it up, so to speak.
This would be the east side of the old East Ferry property, out with Subdivision is the other side. Um, that's what this piece of property would be. The original one he had showed me was cut up similar to the other side, which is messed up. So this is the newer one that he's talked to Mr. Buckley about and just submitted just for us to look at, so. Looks much better than the other one.
And didn't, isn't the latest that the five acres doesn't count anymore, the state has realized? As far as it's going to meet all specifications of subdivision?
This will have to go through the planning back to us, but, um, I said to Mr. Buckley, been talking to him, just wanted to kind of let everybody see it.
Where's that, radio tower? That's the radio tower.
And this driveway that's in this is that existing one that's, you see off the road that comes directly across from the...
It goes into the, goes up to the radio tower.
No, the radio tower, there's River Road, this is the...
The radio tower's on the opposite side, this is...
Yeah.
This is the road we currently have.
Yeah. Across from the radio tower.
Do you have anything else? No. Okay.
So it's four lots, but what do you want to do?
It'll come, it'll come back through, um, through the planning commission back to us. As far as the other side, we're still working on getting some information and maybe later to gather to go towards the, uh, to the property owner of the subdivision, so. Right. Move on to the engineer's report.
Uh, just a quick update on the clear web of the water treatment plant. Uh, preliminary acquisition packet, um, has been submitted, included notifications and stimulus from air. Uh, included notification for property owner and public and stuff like that. All requirements of CDVG. Uh, design packet, um, will be delivered to TDEC and CDVG December twenty-seventh. Um, approval is anticipated January thirty-first. Uh, ARP, offer funding milestones, the, the nearest one, closer to us, I think we talked about last month, is January thirtieth, is sixty percent plans and specs. We, we're ahead of that. As far as the ARP project, the asset management plan, uh, Tyler is working on getting the templates together and beginning to start a list that requests. Uh, that could range from who's in charge of this, who's to contact with this, um, kind of stuff. But starting on OJ request and the templates for those, um, asset management plans. Um, GIS, we have taken, Rusty, Rusty provided us a, a table full of ad builds. Uh, those are currently, we've scanned those in, brought those back, um, working through sewer stuff, making some modifications with them. What kind of more sewer that y'all got that we didn't know about? Um, and then adjusting things so that we're more accurate, uh, going into construction and stuff, so that will help. Uh, sewer area, uh, we met with Rusty and, uh, Mayor Irwin tonight to review the thirty percent plans that were delivered, uh, last Friday. Uh, we will begin working towards the sixty percent plan to go over those. Uh, with Rusty, again, pump stations, same thing. Uh, we looked at those tonight and we continue to work on those.
Any questions? Thank you. All right, uh, planning commissioner report, Sean, do you have anything?
Just had two of them present, that's all we had this month. And West Park Circle, Irwin Avenue.
Where's Irwin Avenue, picture? Where's Irwin Avenue?
Uh, near the...
That is...
Drive the house, that's the free house.
Oh.
Is that the big place?
No, they're building a bathroom, I'm doing...
Sean, where are we at on the military place out here? Have they gotten some complaints, some more complaints on it?
I'm doing some, just, because I called him last week and he's not done anything since I called him last.
He moved the helicopter out today.
Just keeps piling stuff up.
There's three more of them.
Storming.
I think we could get that.
Talking about the parks.
The people from Storm are really complaining a lot just because it's making their business look real bad, so I've had some complaints lately.
I, I would like to comment, Sean, um, last month or the month before, he had sent a letter to that house that's right across from B C that has the yard sale all day and night, and it looks so much better. I was shocked. The last time I just stopped and looked, I was like, wow, he did a good job. Just, I don't know what you sent to him, but it works, so.
I don't know, they've called me about four hundred times since then.
Congratulations.
Hey, Sean, do you know what they're building on top of the hill right out here? I guess you're maybe pulling from West Street.
It looks like a duck wind or something. What is that?
I have a blue tar from the ridge.
Yeah, what is that?
They have none of...
They're not going to present.
I thought it was going to be an activity scene.
Check into it and see.
I thought it was going to be like a lightning storm.
They're something, they're building something.
Yeah, I'll go up there tomorrow. I don't ever go at least.
Yeah, you can see if you start looking out.
It's just a, a whole different file. All right, anything for, ask for Sean?
No, sir.
All right, Parks.
Park, we're, we're, we've got a plan. We got a plan on what we need, what we're, what we're looking at the, for the last hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. And also for the grant that's going to cover the, uh, bathrooms. And hopefully by next month, we'll, we'll, we'll coordinate with the VFW and the Historic Society about putting something to make it look like it. So that, right now, it looks like you walk, drive up to it after you're out of town, it's the park. It says it's Memorial Park, Veterans Memorial, we're trying to do something to make sure you can say, oh, I finished the honor of the veterans. And then also, uh, hopefully get Skipper to get with Rusty sometime between now and next month about, make sure we're all on the same page about where we're going to put, where the water is, where the sewer is, blah, blah, blah.
Are y'all going to present to us soon, let us know?
No, we'll just let you know when it's open.
But to let us know...
Yeah, yeah, hopefully that's what, that's what I would be nice to have, like, genuinely, something to come, bring to the board to say, hey.
Make sure it's a good policy.
Yes, 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 yes. And we're going to think about the, the pickleball courts and redoing...
The big track.
Redoing the big track and the, and the, and the tennis courts as best we can with the funds available. We have to be digging them up and doing them, that, that may just be taken. Yeah, but that, that would take probably more than that.
As far as making it look like military or veterans wise, I had talked to the guy over the...
Ambus?
Ambus, good thing, yeah. And he had, he was supposed to get back with me and get a number of what would you call to get vehicles donated or old military stuff donated. So I'll try to reach out, back out to him again, but...
I'll just call, get in contact with all that, see who they do with the, their little, by the, destroyers.
We heard there's a helicopter in town.
There was. A lot of... Sean, rack it out.
There's more.
Stuff up there.
But I would like to say that the guy's property out here on, uh, Notephone is wonderful now, where all that stuff used to be. But it's looking nice. They actually built a house, I mean, now some of that stuff was piled up on, on...
Which is in the county.
Yeah, it's up there now.
Now they brought it to the city.
I don't know that, but...
Anything else on Parks?
Uh, hopefully, like I said, we'll have something really more firm around next month.
I'm going to back up just a second for communication wise, it's something I forgot. Um, something that's going to be coming up is the air unit in the bank has went out. It's thirty-one years old, it's going to have to be replaced. Um, it's going to be happy bid out, it's that expensive, so the, um, they gave me a preliminary idea of price, would be between thirteen and fifteen thousand to replace it. Um, so, um, we're going to get the exact specifications.
I got the specs, so we can advertise.
To get it bid out, uh, and then I'll bring that back. They're running on emergency heat right now, as far as heating goes, um...
What do we do with the rent? Where do they go?
Uh, to the rent line item?
I know, but it's...
It goes into rent and it's part of general funds. Yeah, because we don't have, you know, revenue and expenses are not together. One, you know, one thing that we had done, you know, for a couple of years or a few years, and we, we backed off this year in the budget was in the, in the rental building budget, we put in kind of that exact amount that we were bringing in. It was like thirty-one thousand. We did lower it this year because we weren't usually spending that much on them. And so this year, we, you know, you only put fifteen thousand in rental building expenses. Um, but we do bring in a lot, you know, double that.
Is there a way to put that money into an account to build for those types of things? You know, so that when this pops up, our general fund budget is very, very tough, you know?
Restrict some funds that come in.
Is that possible to do?
Separated that way.
Your rental money somewhere, so that when these things come up, we have that money to...
I mean, if, if you set aside, if you said rental money would be restricted, and when I say restricted, I mean not just in the general fund. I mean, we could have a line item and, and you say that that is restricted funds to be used on, um, on rental building expenses. And so we could, we could set that up, you know, similar to how I got to figure out how to set up, uh, the fire department thing, so.
It's not going to have issues, this building. It's going to have issues.
Well, anything we bring in over our budget just goes in the fund balance anyway.
Yeah, I mean, it's in there, right, it's in there.
It's going to go, and the actual client comes in.
We, we think we're going to bring in twenty-seven thousand, right?
Yeah.
So even if that is thirteen to fifteen, still...
It's...
Bringing back twenty-seven and rent.
Twenty-seven and rent.
If that's what we're doing.
So, just according to this, and so if it is thirteen to fifteen, we're kind of covered.
Hopefully, soon we'll get those bids in and I'll, we'll send them out to everybody soon we get those bids.
Uh, communications, why you backed up? Did you tell us what changes have been made? I know we've heard they were pleased and we've done some stuff.
Um, I meant to have you all print that out, the list of everybody, um...
I did a, um, I just updated our website today so I could show it to you, you can read off their title. Let me get it.
I meant to print that off, and I did not print that off.
Let me see, uh, make sure we had all that updated.
Well, she done that out, I will say this, Brian White is going to, is going to be the new water operator. He has signed up with T A U D for an apprenticeship program. Will they walk him through all the different classes to get his certifications and get the test passed? So, um, that is, that is one of the new, new, um, changes. So I'll just go down through the list so everybody knows. So Rusty's the pub works director, John Gibson is the chief operator of the water plant. Brian White's going to be the second water plant operator. Uh, Randall McComb is currently the wastewater plant operator. Um, Dustin Davis is the streets foreman. Um, Nathan, John True, uh, Jackson Jennings are the distribution operators. Uh, Tower Shepherd has moved to the meter reader position, and we've hired Gage Wilford as the maintenance and owning. Uh, we still have the other sewer plant open at the moment.
Is Randall going to get his certification received?
He don't wish to seek certification. I offered that to him, but he don't wish to seek certification, he just wants to stick with what he's doing. Any questions?
All right, what, what, since you're talking about T A U D, talked with a couple of guys there last week, and they were very complimentary of Rusty and, and John Gibson. Said everybody, said they've, they've got this, I think it was the direct quote.
I think they feel a lot more, uh, a lot more comfortable since they sit down and they've been here a few times. I think we're heading in the right direction.
We have it, we're not a war.
All right, move on to new business, uh, E nine one one addressing policy.
That packet, the same, the same packet that was, that, uh, she did, did at the workshop a couple of months ago is, is in there. And I, I confirmed today, I, I spoke to Stephanie about whether we needed to, whether she was asking us to do a Town of Decatur E nine one one street naming and addressing policy, or whether it, she was asking us to adopt the county policy. And that is, that, that would be the simplest way, I think, and the way, the way to do it. She can, she can speak to that.
All she's going to be assigned for the city and the county, so it can be in the policy if you want to simply have your logo, have your title. That's what they do, I can, I can do that, however you wish to do it. It's going to read the exact same as the John one.
And, and the addresses for the East property up there? That was part of the package, that's not part of this, right? Because this is, this is going to have to be changed.
No. That wasn't part of it.
This is part of the notes, for the note, okay.
That was just some examples of it.
So it ends with the...
Page eleven, is the, is that page eleven still part of the policy? Fifty-eight, that's the one?
The East property, East Ferry property establishes time and example of why you need a policy, but if all those are going to need redress, if that becomes a subdivision.
Michael, mostly adopt the E nine one one board policy.
Second?
Addressing policy.
So, do we have to change addresses, we already have? Are you gonna do that before we move?
So, how that will work is, I'm not specifically just going out trying to find addresses to change, but if there's some that come up that fall out of line, I, I will change those. However, I will take steps to help the homeowners, um, cause I know it is an aggravating process. So I'll reach out to the courthouse, um, the city, let you guys know here at the Water Department that there's gonna be a change in the address, um, and do those things, so there may be a few in the city, I don't see a lot. My problems are mainly out in the county, but...
More for in the future.
Yeah.
Alderman Meadows. Alderman Myers.
Uh.
Alderman Peeden.
Uh.
Alderman Rowland.
Uh.
Alderman Ward.
Uh.
All right, next is, and then he went, got his Tiber certification, I think he's taking over from upstairs, correct?
I make a motion that we pay him his one-time certification payment for his Tiber certification.
I'll second.
Alderman Meadows. Alderman Myers.
Uh.
Alderman Peeden.
Uh.
Alderman Rowland.
Uh.
Alderman Ward.
Uh.
Thank you.
Thank you for getting your certification, sir.
All right, the, next is new copy machine.
That's not you, is it?
You think one, you think you...
I know, but it looks the same to me.
That's, that's old way.
I'm leaving, I'm done.
Bless her heart.
You're basically just a person, then, okay?
So, on the, um, on the, the copy machine, I put the, the three, and I, I just wrote their brand on the top. There's a Sharp, a Konica, a Kia Sarah. And I think I, when I had messaged you guys before about, I, I spoke to the, um, the salesman, and basically that, that monthly service fee that includes the certain number of, of, um, copies, we don't even have to do that, we can just go from zero and pay, because there's no, there's no break in that, that first number of copies or anything. It's just based on the price per page. So we could just start, we, we can have a zero monthly, um, fee and we just pay for the copies. And so, and basically what it then comes down to is that per copy page, per copy price. And so, the Sharp is the, the least expensive machine and the least expensive per copy price. Uh, if you look through those, those three options, so, just to kinda clarify, they're very, very closely, um, close cost, but, but that is definitely the least expensive in, in both. And, and he says that it's as good as, they're all as good as any of the others. And, and that per copy price, and when we pay that, that includes all toner, ink, repairs, everything.
Everything but the paper.
Everything but the paper.
Correct. Looking at the specs, the Sharp will do what y'all need it to do?
Yes.
Michael, mostly accept the Sharp? The biotriple.
How are we gonna pay for it?
We have funds somewhere, I'm assuming.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's, you know, nothing in the budget right now, it would be, need to be amended from, um, from, you know, we, we would divide it up, um, definitely, uh, between general and water and sewer fund. Um, there's nothing in, in general fund, there're probably some, um, we could, I'm sure we could amend something from another water and sewer line item that may have some extra in it, I don't know that we could from a general fund line item.
Just a little worry about.
Yeah. So it would need to be amended in from fund balance. A, a new, a new expense.
Mostly that's the Sharp with the funding, I don't wanna say TBA, but TBD, but to come from either the budget or it has to come from general fund, won't it?
TBA?
Why can't we not take it from TBA impact?
I mean, how much we spent in TBA?
Um, oh gosh, I haven't read that report in a while, but the, um, we definitely have some, and we got some ren, we've got, we've got new funds that, that just came in, so, um...
So TBA we cover.
TBA, we, we cover it, yeah. Yeah, we just got it, yeah, we just got eighty-four thousand for this fiscal year, and we've, we've not spent much of last fiscal years, um...
I think it was fifty, we spent out of the fine.
Uh, see, TBA? See here. Yeah, and it, probably that report is not gonna...
Eight thousand.
This fiscal year?
It's what it's showing.
And what we've been at, right.
We paid for the software, yeah, for the, uh, purchase orders and all that to add to our accounting.
Um, yes, we have.
Cause all it shows right here is eighty-three hundred, twelve dollars, nine hundred and ten, so I think we're okay, yeah.
Yeah, we're just gonna change the income.
So TBA, so pay from the whole thing, from TBA impact fund?
I'll just say.
Alderman Meadows. Alderman Myers.
Uh.
Alderman Peeden.
Uh.
Alderman Rowland.
Uh.
Alderman Ward.
Uh.
All right, last but least is employee Christmas gift.
And I, I did look today at the, uh, the spreadsheet, the salary budget where we, when we created the, the budget numbers, um, and we did factor in six hundred dollars at that time, which is, I believe, what we did last year. And so, of course, taxes did come out, and to be clear, taxes, we have to, have to pay taxes on them, but, um, but that is what was, what was budgeted in, that was considered.
I make a motion that we give each Christmas, each employee a Christmas gift of six hundred dollars.
About a holiday gift.
Holiday gift?
Is that right?
No.
Mr. Kearney?
I would say...
It's still Christmas.
Maybe Jesus was stillborn.
Is that a second?
Not stillborn, but born.
Wait a minute, stillborn?
Alderman Meadows. Alderman Myers.
Uh.
Alderman Peeden.
Uh.
Alderman Rowland.
Stay.
Alderman Ward.
Uh.
Who's in general?
Me, like, get me out of here. I don't think anyone's here. Maybe Jesus was not...